Apologize, we ran a little late. We are already in open meeting as we voted on at 6 o'clock.
The meeting is going to start if everyone can settle, please.
In addition to the full school committee, I would like to mention that Alan Strauss, Terry Fleming, Deidre Farrell-Welsh, and Ase Belay are present. And I'd like to ask if anybody other than Lake Cam is recording the meeting.
I'm going to report for the mass recording.
Okay, thank you so much. Can you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands one nation under one in the digital with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Lombardi is not here tonight. And I do see that we have a presentation today from some students from Assawamset. I'll invite you to the podium. Ms. Penalk, good evening.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are we? We're very excited tonight, we kind of have a full crew. So any students that are presenting with us can come on over here. And any of the teaching staff can also join me over here. So we're extremely excited about presenting tonight. We do have, we are showing you little snippets of quite a few things. We had practice, so we are going to try to keep this to 10 minutes. But we are focusing on STEM from our classrooms to our families, particularly a STEM night that we just had. That shows kind of what we do in the classroom that was just then transferred to families when they came to our curriculum night. So our little engineers, so if you guys want to just like wave over here, I'm just going to give you a quick introduction, Olivia Fraga. Olivia. Billy Berry. We have Winter Perizio, Jay Souza, and Emily Welty. And then we have Aubrey Rue, Ava Amaral, Addison Wood, and Reagan Jacob. Nice. And Kyle Vigarelli, Emily McNaul, and Ryan Hope. And then for our teachers here tonight, we have Mrs. Sylvain, she's our media specialist. Mrs. Doobie is our math specialist. Mrs. Nash, grade 2 teacher. Ms. Martino, kindergarten. Mrs. Holmes, grade 3. Ms. Mari is a grade 1 teacher and also our curriculum leader for science. Mrs. Holmes is our curriculum leader for ELA. And Mrs. Cooper is our reading specialist who came to support STEM also, which is awesome. So she's here with us as well. So the focus and why we chose this to present tonight. I feel like over the last two years, we've really taken a bigger focus in STEM. So obviously STEM has always been a focus. But the biggest changes these last two years is Doreen Doobie and the math support that we've received at these schools. And our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Terry Fleming, has also come on board two years ago. So obviously, the math support has been extremely instrumental. I actually met with Mrs. Doobie today to do her Summit of Evaluation, which included analyzing all of her data, and it's very impressive. So I just do want you to know that the math support has been extremely, extremely beneficial to our students. When Mrs. Fleming had come on board, it was pretty early in the year, and she asked principals what we were doing for STEM Week. I'm just going to speak for myself, but I've never done a STEM Week. I've never actually celebrated that. Obviously, we do do STEM in the classroom and things and problems of those nature. So that was kind of just a little bit more of an eye-opener that these types of things should really be interdisciplinary and part of the curriculum all day long, especially with the analytical skills that STEM teaches and things of that nature. So tonight, we are going to actually show you some of these things, again with some tidbits from the STEM night and what we see in classrooms. So our focus is going to be to transform students into resilient problem solvers, right? We want them to have a natural interest in the world around them. We want them to ask questions, we want them to be creative, we want them to explore possibilities, we want them to make mistakes and be resilient. And we've quickly realized that it's about the process and not the product. And the spark for that really came, like I said, about two years ago. So we've been looking at the work of Joe Bowler and Peta Lilia Dahl, I think I'm saying it right. That also supports kind of a math mindset, right? So math is messy, it's not linear. It's not your typical teacher's lesson of here's my objective, here's our task, let me assess and see if you've learned it. That does take place sometimes, as we know. But it's definitely a whole change in mindset for students and for the teaching staff. Just this last two weeks, being in classrooms, I actually saw our teacher, again, which is very common and natural to do, to say to your class, "Oh, did you just hear the way Johnny explained? I love the way..." And the teacher stopped and said, "Nope, you explained to them how you got the answer." And I know it seems like it's just such a common thing, but as a teacher, as you can imagine, you tend to be very structured, very orderly. You tend to do the "I do, we do, and now you do it," and show me that you can do it. So it's just a whole different way of teaching. Just using the words notice and wonder. You know, "I noticed this in this problem, and I wonder if I did this." It just kind of sets the stage for more of open-ended problem solving. So kind of in closing here, we realize that this is a taught skill. Students do not come to school knowing how to justify, knowing how to reason, even knowing how to ask questions. When a student asks a question and the teacher answers it right away, they talk about that shuts down thinking. Even if the answer is wrong, why not say something of, "Wow, that's really interesting, hold that thought." Or just something that lets them know that mistakes are part of our classroom. Joe Bowler, one of the researchers that we've been looking at, talks about the math mindset and how your brain actually fires off synapses when it makes mistakes, and that's when growing occurs. So if you were in a math classroom at Assawamset, you would actually hear, "Great job, you made a mistake! Look at all this growing going on, we're growing in here." Because that is kind of where we want to go. So we want to create these student-led thinking classrooms, right? How do we do that? What does that really look like? We want students to take ownership of their own learning. We want them to be independent, to be leaders. You know, and again, it's not a simple task for teachers or for students. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mari to tell us why it's so important to start this at the elementary level. And then we will go into some of the work that we've been doing.
All right, I'm going to try and be louder than the rain. So why is it so important to focus on STEM starting in the elementary level? So we have students coming to us who are naturally curious. So this is actually one of the best times that we can get them and really focus that curiosity to enable them to continue learning, to exploring, but also to learn how to problem solve. There are so many benefits to STEM that are beyond just a science or a math classroom. We see that they are becoming independent thinkers, they are able to collaborate, communicate, and work together to solve problems. These are skills that can then transfer with them into everyday life. We see that STEM is also something that can promote leadership. It is something that is inclusive and has equity. We're seeing how students can learn in very many different ways. Someone who might not be able to explain their thinking can now show it, can build, can show how they think on the inside without having to actually verbally say that. So these are things that we are very excited about seeing in our classrooms already. And we also know that the future for our students now is going to look very different than it is today. STEM is continuing to develop at all times. So they will have opportunities in the future that we can't maybe even wrap our minds around yet, which is an exciting thought. So we want to start promoting that interest and curiosity for them at this elementary level and have that continue with them through their schooling career here at Freetown Lakeville. So we're so excited to highlight some of what we've done with STEM this year. And one of the things that we recently had done, as Ms. Penalk had referenced, was a STEM curriculum night that we had last month where students and families were invited. We had across every grade level different activities that students could access. So as a grade 1 teacher, I had an activity that any grade level could come to. We adapted this so that it could be accessible to all students. So it was a great success. We had a great turnout, and you'll see a little bit of what happened there tonight as well. Thank you.
So this is just a quick slide of a first grade teacher, Ms. Twardzik, and this was her STEM night activity. She focused on sound, and then this was also something that they did in the classroom. So it was an extension from the classroom learning that's been taking place. We're not going to look at any of these videos or do anything with this, but I just wanted to show you kind of what it entailed. So it is a video of Sound for Kids. They did then read the book about Bringing the Rain to Kapati Plain. And then there are some diagrams. And then on the next page, next slide, again, there's more extension activities. And you can kind of see the use of questioning even that she uses and the higher-level thinking and tasks that they're involved in at the first grade level. So like what happens to the object as the wave travels? What type of object is the wave traveling through? Why is it important to learn about sound? And when would these skills be useful in real life? So these are the things we're talking about even with our 5- and 6-year-olds to make sure that they are prepared for the future.
So part of our STEM night had engineering and design. As you can see, we had many different activities. Some of them were focused around our ST Math with Gigi. On the top left-hand corner, you can see some habitats for Gigi that were made with toothpicks and marshmallows. You can see some pictures of one of the activities that the kindergarten team led, which was building a bridge. We had rubber ducks, and we tasked our students with building a bridge where people could travel over it, but the ducks could safely pass underneath it. So they got to work with their families. And it was really interesting to see, and really exciting to see, how the students were able to explain and rationalize and bring their families into the learning that we sometimes do in the classroom. And then right in the middle, Assawamset Eagles. We had a station where students were able to create and build an eagle nest and then try and put an eagle in it to see if it would fit, which was really wonderful. And on the next slide, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what STEM looks like, especially in the younger grade classrooms. So for STEM, we think about a lot of planning and executing of things. But in the kindergarten classroom, that's not necessarily a possibility. We can't ask our students necessarily to draw their plan before acting it out. So a lot of what we do is based on discussion. We do a lot of verbal planning. Do we do a lot of brainstorming in our class and come up with all the ideas we have?
Yeah.
We do a lot of brainstorming, we do a lot of imagination. And then it's a lot of trial and error through creation. We talk through the process, we talk through our disappointments and, "Uh-oh, this didn't work, what can we do next time? How can we fix it?" So a lot of trial and error comes with imagination, creation, and celebration of what our students do. So that little video right in the middle is just a 10-second clip. Our students made Rube Goldberg machines, which if you don't know what they were, I didn't either, but if you've ever played mousetrap. So our students used a lot of materials in the classroom, and they didn't necessarily have a problem to solve, but they had something they wanted to do. They wanted to get their marble from the top to the bottom without anything breaking, without anything falling apart. So they used a whole bunch of materials, even some unconventional ones like stacking books on top of blocks in order to do that. So on the next slide, we have our engineering and design process. So you can see some pictures of my students working on different STEM activities throughout the year. Some are creating machines, and some are working on the projects that we brought to share with you today. So this is kind of the engineering design process. Again, a lot of it is stuff that we talk through in the kindergarten classroom. We do a lot of asking of questions, what can we do? Imagining answers. And then our planning is a lot of discussion and communication with our friends and our teachers. And then creation and experimentation. And then we can go back and forth and improve, experiment, create again, and it kind of all goes together. So there's one more slide that goes with my two friends that I brought with me today. What we have been talking about lately is animal needs. So Emily, do you remember where we went? We went on a field trip last week. Do you remember where we went?
We went to the farm.
We went to a farm, we went to Round the Bend Farm in Dartmouth. And Ryan, what were some of the things we saw when we were at the farm?
Roosters.
There were some roosters? Were there other animals? What other animals did we see?
Pigs.
The baby goats, there were some ducks, we got some seeds and plants. So when we got back to the classroom, I gave each of these two students here a farm animal. Ryan, what farm animal did you pick? A swan, and what animal did you pick, Emily? A pig. And I gave them the problem. How can we keep our farm animals safe? And we did a lot of discussion. So we talked a lot about what animals need to survive. Ryan, do you remember one thing? What do animals need to live? What do they need to survive? They need food. What else do they need, Emily? They need air, they need food, they need...
Water.
Water, and they need a place to?
Live.
A place to live. How do they stay safe from some of the other animals? What can we do to help them stay safe from other animals that might be in the wild?
Get in a shelter.
They can get in a shelter? Yes, so that they don't get hurt and that they can be safe. What can we build around our shelter, Ryan?
I think right on the wall, so I, the animals can't get in.
You're right, we can build walls, we can build a fence, and we can build part of a shelter so that they stay safe in different kinds of weather and from different animals. So our solution to that problem was to make an enclosure for our animals. And would you like to show everybody the enclosures that you made for your animals? Yeah, go ahead, you can lead us down to the table. Come on, Ryan. We brought them with us today if you wanted to get up and take a peek at them in a minute or whatever, best works for you. So we have two different ones. I would pick them up, but I'm afraid because they're very precarious material and I would break them. So Ryan, will you explain to us, what did you make?
So this is like the door so like everyone can get through.
Everyone can get through when they need to?
This is all like the water.
That's the water for your swan. What else did you add?
This is some grass that the swan can walk to. And then there, and then, and then there's a bunch of stripes on it which are food.
What else did you build? What's this little thing over here?
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's like a mini house to keep the swan out from bad weather.
And what are these two things that you added over here?
There's like, like a dangerous animal. The swan can like go in one of these boxes so it can't get through.
Oh my goodness, I absolutely...
It'll like jumps over the door, then goes into the house.
That is excellent, I love it. Ooh, there's some thunder, bad weather, speak of it. All right, Emily, will you tell us what you made? What was the animal that you picked again?
A pig.
A pig, and can you tell us some of the things that you made for your pig?
I made a bed for him to sleep, and I made food and milk. And there's a little bath with a towel. And I made a bathroom, and I made little blocks.
And what is this thing right here?
It's a door so the farmer can get in.
A door so the farmer can get in? And, go ahead, keep telling me.
So when bad weather can, it can close it.
So we can close it up over the top when there's bad weather so that the pig doesn't get injured or harmed and can stay safe in the bad weather? Emily, when we first built your structure, we put a roof over the whole thing. And then, do you remember what happened when we had the roof on it? What did I do? I accidentally bumped the table, and what happened?
It broke.
It broke, so what did we do when our structure broke?
We took some out and we made a little roof.
We took some of the roof away so that there was some roof, and then there wasn't as much roof, so it couldn't cave in again. So do you think I can walk around really quick? Do you think I'm going to break your projects if I pick them up? Maybe? I'll bring them around really quick. So you can see some of the hard work that they did. Ready, Ryan? This is going to be the big one, this is the heavy one, I hope I don't break it.
So Kyle and I are going to talk about another activity from STEM night, which was build a boat. We had some buckets of water, some big tubs of water. And students were given tinfoil and pennies. And the challenge was to build a boat, create a, design a boat that could hold as many pennies as possible without letting in water. And Kyle's going to tell you how he designed, created, and revised his boat so that it could hold a certain number of pennies.
My first attempt, the boat was flat. I observed that the edges weren't curved enough. The boat held just a few pennies before. Water came up from the sides and the boat sank. I revised my plan and tried again. This time I curved the edges to make them slope up. On the flat boat, the water came up from the sides and made the pennies fall off. This time, the boat was more like a bucket. The sides made it so the pennies won't fall off and water couldn't enter. The second time, it held 39 pennies. My favorite part was being able to modify my boat and improve it so that it held more penny, more, so that it had a more sturdy design and held more pennies.
For this STEM night at Assawamset, students and families were able to play and explore with Makey Makey. They hooked it up to the Chromebooks and they used sponges and aluminum foil to play a piano app. So we also do a lot of other fun STEM activities in library class. Since students love Makey Makey so much, we combined Makey Makey and Scratch for this next project. And Billy and Olivia are going to tell us a little bit about it.
We made a Makey Makey Scratch project. Scratch was created by the MIT MetaLab and is a visual computer programming language that allows students to create interactive stories, games, and animations. Makey Makey was created by MIT students and it allows you to turn anything into a game controller using alligator clips and conductive materials to complete a circuit. In the library, we used both of these and created a chase game in Scratch. Then we made our own game controller to play our game using Makey Makey.
First in Scratch, we picked out a background and two characters. We started to code the characters to move left, right, up, and down and move around the screen. We also programmed a scoreboard. Next, we started to make the Makey Makey project. We made the game controller out of pencil and cardstock paper. The graphite in the pencils is conductive and the Makey Makey turned our drawings into buttons. Then we hooked up Makey Makey to the game controller and played our game.
So come over here. So real quick, we're just going to show you the game that they created in Scratch. And this is a chase game, and this is Makey Makey. And I'm just going to hook this up to the Promethean board. So now they're going to be able to play. So they're controlling the game on the paper controller. And Makey Makey allows it. So every time it hits the jellyfish, it's making. Awesome, Josh.
Hi, everyone. So tonight, we brought with us some mats, as you can see. These are called Math in Movement Mats. We were fortunate when Mrs. Fleming came on board. She introduced us to these wonderful mats and this wonderful program. This program was developed by Suzie Koontz, and the story is really cute. Her very overactive daughter had a hard time sitting in a typical setting. And so she was working with her and said, "You know what? Let's go out and take a break, let's go outside, let's try to do our math outside." So they went outside. And after quite a while, nothing was happening. There was no clicking going on, there was no retention going on, and they were working on skip counting. So a little girl said, "Mom, I've had enough." So off to the trampoline she went to take a break, and she started jumping on the trampoline, and she was skip counting on the trampoline. So that was an aha moment for Suzie. And she did some research, and long and behold, she's created a whole program on math and movement. It's a kinesthetic program. So there's a lot of movement, there's visual, and there's a lot of retention that goes on with all of this due to that. Sorry, lost my train of thought. In her research, she found out that all of this physical activity leads to a lot of learning, better engagement, and then of course, once again, you're going to hear that word, retention, the retention of the learning. It also helps with self-esteem because of the movement and the retention, again, of this math movement. And it also helps with self-regulation. So these mats are used in classrooms. I use them daily. My children enter the classroom as a warm-up, and they hop the mats for different reasons. Skip counting is the biggest reason for these mats. And we know skip counting is the conceptual piece to multiplication. It is the beginning of multiplication. So we also use them, my second graders use them, for practicing their addition and subtraction facts. So the other piece to math movement is the cross-body movement. And cross-body movement is something that can take place for two or three minutes a day. It can be used as a brain break, it can be used as part of your lesson. And we use it as a warm-up, don't we? My third graders use it not as much this year, they use the mats more, but they also use the cross-body movement. So tonight, we're going to show you a little bit about or how it works. You ready? And we have a lot of different mats, these are not the only mats. We have a big, huge number grid. We do a lot of place-value work with that number grid. And then we have some other ones also. You ready? Okay. So to speed up the process, we'll have two activities going on at the same time. So my second graders, here are your markers, if you want to. Actually, go run the markers over there, okay? And would you go run the erasers over there just so that you have it in case you need it, and then you can come back, okay? I think we'll just do maybe one card each instead of more because of time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay? Alright, so second graders, here's your, I'll just take a card, sorry. We're gonna do more, but that's okay. Okay? So you can go figure out that equation and, do you wanna roll or do you wanna throw?
Throw.
We're not gonna do both tonight. You wanna throw? Do you wanna throw?
Um, I'll do that.
Okay, good. So you can show them each. Okay? But before they start this activity, they always warm up by hopping the mat so that they're practicing their multiples. So would you show them how we do that?
Eighteen, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, forty, forty-eight, fifty-six, forty-seven.
And you're just gonna stop? That's all. You ran out of room, that's okay.
Fourteen, nineteen, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty-four, forty, forty-eight, sixty-four, six.
Okay. So you have yours done, you can go record your fact family. Okay? What do we record? The missing add-in? Okay. So do you wanna start with the smaller number or the bigger? The smaller number, the less number? Okay, go ahead. And then make your way to your greater number.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Come on back here. And we're gonna stop here. So how many hops was that? Now we can turn it into subtraction! Ah-ha, look at that! Subtraction! Fifteen! Go ahead and hop your steps.
One, two, three, four.
Yes! And now, what do you have for an equation?
Fantastic.
Fantastic! Go ahead and record your fact family. Fantastic! Alright, girls, go ahead. Give it a roll. Give it a toss.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven times eight is fifty-six.
Come on over. Good job.
Four. One, two, three, four. Eight times four is thirty-two.
Fantastic! Come on over and record your family. And, we go through this, um, each child gets to do probably two or three different fact families. And, as you can see, they're now doing multiplication, division, addition, and subtraction. Um, I've seen a huge improvement. I know the classroom teachers have also. Classroom teachers are using these mats, not as frequent as I do because I kind of control them. Really. And we know kids love them, right? Girls, fantastic job.
Thank you, guys!
Good job.
Whoever the parents are of those four, I have some pictures and videos, so if you can just check in with me, we know if I can post them on the banner, that'd be great. And if you want me to, I brought them to you, I can, otherwise I send everything to, um, Mrs. Penal.
I don't know if that's okay? Excuse me. Alright, this is our last one. We'll be wrapping it up.
Change the slide for you.
Do you have a slide, Mrs. Penal? I'm sorry? Do you have a, a slide? Oh, okay. Very well. Sorry. Okay. So, uh...
In second grade, we've been, um, referring to the Mathematical Practice Standards and, uh, we also have been practicing the Building Thinking classrooms. And, uh, so, for the sake of time, while the other, uh, grade levels were presenting, my students were working on a problem, oh, which is over here! I thought that was... I don't know how you can see, but let's see. Let's move it over here so everyone can see. Okay? Okay? So, uh, the students work on a whiteboard, vertical, and they only have one white, uh, board marker. And they have an assignment, a problem that they need to solve. And they work together, uh, sharing strategies, um, listening to each other, uh, their ideas, and, um, coming up together to solve, uh, the problem. Uh, this is a poster of the, uh, Mathematical Practice Standards that we use. Uh, we always start with number one, so Winter is gonna explain, uh, how they work together with the, uh, Mathematical Practice Number One.
I solve. I solve means you, um, first make a plan, then you, um, then you try to solve the problem without, uh, without giving up.
Yep. And then after you solve the problem, what's the last thing you do?
After you solve the problem, you explain.
And...
And check, and check your work.
And check your work. And then, uh, Mathematical Practice Standard Number Three, um, is all about the communication. Sharing their strategies together, working together. And to help them, they have a little bookmark, uh, math talk, uh, suggestions, sentence starters. Um, if they agree, they have polite ways to learn how to communicate with each other. I agree because, um, I disagree because. Right? And, uh, then, finally, um, we wanna make sure that we're using our math language. So, as the students present their problem, uh, you'll listen for their math vocabulary, um, how they're working together, sharing ideas, and coming up with the answer. So...
Okay. So we each went through others', um, um, strategies and for my strategy, I did an open number line. So we first, um, read the clues and the first clue said, "The number is greater than eight, than eight, one hundred, um, seventy-eight." So I, um, so then we, it was, "The value of the digit in the tenth place is, um, eight, eight." So I drawed an eight. The nu, the number is less than nine hundred five. The sum of the digits, digit is less, is less than fif, fifteen. You do not, and you do not say the number when you're skip counting, so I knew that meant you had, it was gonna be an odd number. So, I first drawed all the numbers that in, that led to, um, one hundred ninety. And I, and I first cer, I crossed out the even numbers and did the odd numbers. Now, the thing about the odd numbers, they have, their add-ins need to add up with, um, the sum of the add-on needs to end up, to, uh, end up being lesser than fifteen, so it can be fourteen or lower. So, I read this one, it was ten, it could be yes. Um, this one was twelve, it could be yes, and fourteen could be less. So, and, and the other ones was like sixteen, um, eighteen, things, things like that. So I knew it had to be, it had to be, um, one hundred eighty-one, one hundred eighty-three, or one hundred eighty-five. We found out the numbers and, so I wrote them in a hundred, tens and ones chart. So I, so it had to be hu, one hundred 'cause it had to be less than one hundred ninety-five. So, and, and it, the tens had to be eight 'cause... 'Cause it said, it, it had to be eight tens on the paper. So, so, the, and, so, and it had to be odd because on the paper, it said, "You do not say this when you skip count by twos." So, the numbers that we came up with are one hundred eighty-one, one hu, one hundred eighty-three, and one hundred eighty-five. And, and, so the answers are one hundred eighty-one, one hundred eighty-three, and one hundred eighty-five.
Okay. And how did you know that those were your three answers?
Because they added up to one hundred, wait, the sum of the digits added up to one hundred eighty-one, that equaled to ten. One hundred eighty-three equal to twelve. One hundred eighty-five equal to fourteen.
Anything else, Jayce? That you wanna mention? Nope? Alright.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry that took so long. We tried to fit in all of STEM and it really has been such a shift over the two years. I wanted to try and at least give a little tidbit of, um, what we're doing, you know, where, uh, Mrs. Nash even says, you know, "They only have one marker." Um, so all of that is just strategy. You give one marker so that if all three kids had markers, they'd be coloring and it promotes leadership, it promotes collaboration, it promotes opportunity to talk and really dive into the problem. Um, so, that was our presentation and I thank you so much to all the kids and all the staff members that volunteered to come here. They're amazing.
If I could get the whole group back there against the, the bookcases area there, I would love to get a picture of all of them and the staff. Don't think you can't get out of it. Um, I am so proud of all of you guys. You're amazing.
We can pause for a few minutes for photographs.
Five minute recense.
Thanks.
One more?
Huh? Is that...[1315.12]
The next item on our agenda is a student presentation from the high school.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ava Mello. I am the group communicator for our civic action project. Right now, we are missing our group designer, Jaylee Howar. She is at a lacrosse game right now, which is very fitting for the theme because we are trying to lower athletic fees. I play lacrosse personally.
Hi, my name is Brianna Tvekis. I'm the researcher of our group project. And I'm also a student athlete here as I play field hockey and track.
Hi, I am Madeline Polczek. I am the group facilitator, and I do cross-country and track. So our civics project goal is to decrease the financial burden that weighs upon the Ponacuit student athletes and their families. We are working to lower athletic fees by establishing a volunteering system.
So just some quick stats for everybody. The current fees are $325 for your first sport, $200 for your second, and $150 for your third. And then the exception is ice hockey, where you'd pay $800, and that would count as your first sport. The family cap is $1,100 a year, but the average three-sport athlete is paying $675. Next slide, please. Okay. So 370 kids at Ponacuit currently play a sport, which is 55% of our student body. We have 259 kids playing a fall sport, 168 playing a winter sport, and 230 doing a spring sport. And the numbers for how many sports those kids play, we have 161 sport athletes, 133 two-sport athletes, and 77 three-sport athletes. So that's 77 families paying $675 a year. So we conducted a survey with students at Ponacuit. 41.4% reported that the athletic fees are a burden to their family. 52.4% said they would participate more in sports definitely if the fees were lowered. And 47.6% say they'd consider playing more sports. This shows that the fees are a real hardship, and they decrease participation.
So talking about the importance of sports. So the benefits of participating in high school sports are well documented. Sports in general play a huge fundamental role in both the physical health and mental well-being of the students. So sports participation is associated with higher self-esteem, better social skills, fewer depressive symptoms, and higher confidence. Sports also play a huge role in influencing academic performances, future education, employment, and also career success. So these affect individual students, but also have a broader impact upon the community and society.
We are collaborating with the boosters and have developed a subcommittee that is directly responsible for addressing athletic fees. We are currently working on our Phase 1 soft launch, which will involve student athletes volunteering to receive credit for their athletic fees. For example, if the boosters were to contribute a predetermined amount of money to the project, say $3,000, this would provide 60 students the opportunity to volunteer five hours for a $50 credit towards athletics. For the program to grow and be successful, we would need additional funding and volunteer opportunities. Initially, we are going to focus on doing the booster events at the high school, but we hope to extend this to the other schools throughout the district as well as in the community. This is just our starting point. And with this approach, we have limited access to funds and a limited number of volunteer opportunities. Ideally, our ultimate goal would require expanded funding in order to offer a larger monetary contribution and more volunteer opportunities so that everyone who wanted to participate could. And we also help that the schools and the community could work together to achieve this goal. Thank you so much for your time, and we hope to collaborate with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I met with these three wonderful young ladies, as well as Jaylee. Mr. Gabusio met as well. And then we met with Becky Cushing and the boosters. It is a concern for us. I mean, we... First of all, they've done a phenomenal job. And I want to reiterate how impactful the civics projects have been across the board. I'm going to talk about another one later. And the work that our kids are doing. And I want to continue to say, just as I did at the end of last school committee meeting, this is our why. What they're doing, what our primary school kids are doing, we can't forget what investing in them really means. It's a concern. Our athletic fees are the highest in the area. $800 for hockey is just... It just amazes me. You're a hockey parent, Steve, so you know.
I am.
We're paying for ice time. We're paying for, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. Our revolving fund does not cover everything. And we have to pay for officials. So as things go up, our students and families are being asked to pay more and more. When I sat in a meeting with boosters and Becky, the idea of community service hours to reduce fees reminds me of from years ago when it used to be, when is the day going to come when the government has bake sales and schools have the money they need? And it reminds me of that again, that we are asking families to pay more and more money for a sport which should be part of the experience of high school. And so I want to commend the three of you for just a phenomenal job. I want to commend boosters for your involvement and willingness to come up with a small amount of money. We have to do a job. So one of my responsibilities and our responsibilities is to find areas in which our students can do community service. But it's, as Madeline said, it's a soft launch. And there's... We're going to need to figure this out moving... Going down the road. These fees are not going to continue to be sustainable. I keep hearing the word "sustainable" in my two years here. But we can't ask parents to keep going into their pockets. We looked at Deca trips. We looked at the trip to Washington, DC, which costs families $700. It's getting harder and harder. And so we need to figure out some ways. So I don't know if there are any questions for students?
No, no, just a comment. Thank you for your thoughtful research, confident presentation, really well done, and for bringing this issue up. I mean, I love the creativeness with the boosters. I think that collaboration is a great starting point, in addition to the volunteer. But I think it is sort of inspiring to force this committee to take up this issue at some point and produce something or make some recommendations if we can continue this conversation.
Absolutely.
It's a very creative approach. I love it.
Yeah, it's great.
Any other questions from the table?
Just on a sec. Not because I pay the hockey user. Ouch.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, moving on. Superintendent's update. Mr. Strauss?
So in front of you, I want to start with what we are disappointed with. You should have a letter from Project Contemporary Competitiveness. The PCC program, which has been at Stonehill College over the years... Oh, you don't have a copy?
Yeah.
Is being disbanded this year. Because although Freetown-Lakeville had enough students who were interested in attending, the rest of the communities did not. There were 200 students who signed up. They needed 250. Even if we got more of our students to be involved, there wasn't enough students, which is very disappointing. So I know John, your kids... Your daughter, I believe, went?
Yeah, twice.
Yeah. So that's disappointing. But letters are going home from PCC. We aren't involved in it. We just help support it. But letters should be coming. It shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. Class size lists have been provided to you. Anticipated K-numbers will be provided at the next meeting. You have... Our total enrollment actually went up from April to May from 2689 to 2692. I wanted to let you all know and the public know that the Senate Ways and Means Committee has maintained the House recommendation to increase per pupil additional funding from $30 to $104. There's still work to be done. But if that goes through, it's approximately $282,000. And I reached out to Deb Petty and to Bob Nunes as soon as I got this information for us to sit down and have a meeting and, you know, just discuss really what you're going to do with the money. Basically, more than anything else. And, you know, that's good news for the town. It's good news for us. So we will be meeting when we can find some time. And hopefully, it does go through. I was actually surprised, but positive, very positive news. Friday's the Senior Citizen Breakfast at the middle school. Middle school play is this weekend, Friday at 7:00, and Saturday performance is at 3:00 and 7:00 of The Wizard of Oz. So hopefully, I think it's almost sold out. Jack, do you know? It is sold out?
No, it's close.
Close. A few tickets left. At the next meeting, we will introduce you to Jackie Francisco, who is the new middle school principal. She will also be meeting that day at the faculty meeting. So she will meet the staff at the middle school that day. I met for the first time with the regional manager of First Student. It's the first time that she has been here. She came with Ken Rosendies. First time she's been here in a few years. They have developed a program that, not based in Massachusetts, it's actually based in somewhere out west, that will input all routes, heat maps, and provide the local transportation department a rerouting opportunity. So for the first time, we're really going to be able to look... Kenny and his team, and Elaine are fantastic, but they don't have that capability. So now First Student, after our conversation, does have it with the idea of trying to alleviate buses being late in the afternoon at the primary schools. Because that's where our issue is. I've said it over and over again when we came here, the first issue... One of the first issues that we had to deal with was the number of late buses that we're getting to AES and FES, 10, 12, 14, 16 minutes. By the time students get breakfast, you're talking about a half hour. Over 180 days, you're talking about 90 hours of instructional time. We have alleviated that. Buses are no longer late. So that's fantastic. Now we have to fix the other end. And so hopefully, this will help. Along with that, I met with another group of students as part of their civics project the next day who proposed some very positive ideas about the traffic situation, including moving buses to the back of the building. So in other words, instead of buses coming in front of the high school, and they were really talking about the high school, which then gets everything out a little bit earlier, instead of bringing the high school buses through the front, they will bring them around the back. They will go one way, bring them around the back, past the red barn, drop them off there, and then go straight out to the other side to then drop kids off at the middle school. We are going to practice that. I really love the idea. So I spoke with Kenny, and we are going to practice that. It provides parents the opportunities to be the only ones dropping kids off in the main straightaway, and then kids can be in the parking lot. We'll keep parents out of the parking lot, let them drop off kids. Might be a smoother transition. So we're working on that. If we can save five minutes on the front end, it then saves everything else. So I want to commend the four juniors who met with me the other day. They did an outstanding job. And again, all of the civics projects, I've met with multiple kids. I know Greg has, Terry has, our principals have. It's been outstanding. I want to applaud the social studies teachers, Terry, for all the work that's happened in these civics projects. It's not a one-and-done kind of thing. So they should be very proud of themselves. I was going to recognize our dear friend Camille. She is not here, so I will wait on that. Best of luck to all of our AP students. They are taking AP tests. As we posted to them over the last... Their tests are the next two weeks. No student is their score. High positive score, disappointing score. This is just a measure in time. But good luck. And as we know, our Ponacuit kids do very, very well on AP tests. So very positive.
Excellent. Questions for the superintendent, anybody? Okay, thank you.
Alan, just a side note. So for the drop-off in the morning and afternoon, that's where our specialized transportation...
That would be separate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to acceptance of minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as captured for April 24th.
So move.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept executive session minutes also from April 24th.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. Moving on, old business. FY24-25 budget update.
Good evening. In your packet, I have provided to you the fourth quarter report, as well as my director's report. With respect to the Excel spreadsheet and your current budget, this is your current FY24 budget sheet, and it provides you two sections. As you know, the first section is revenue. Where are we with revenue? Our general fund or school committee budget is offset by the first area here. Your revenues come from state aid, assessments from your towns, our member towns, as well as some school-based assets for interest earned income, as well as Medicaid. You're receiving state aid four times a year in regards to Circuit... I'm sorry, State Chapter 70. With respect to other state aid, you're receiving those quarterly and three times a year. And you're also receiving your final wires for the fiscal year on June 30th, which is the last day of the fiscal year, which is extremely important to monitor. So if you underestimated your revenues at 5 o'clock on June 30th and you're trying to close your budget, you've got to be ready to take some action. Jack and I are closing out revenues. We're closing out the fiscal year, and these are the kinds of conversations that we're having. What do we do in regards to fourth quarter activity regarding closing out the fiscal year and revenue monitoring? We are at where we should be at fourth quarter time with respect to revenue at this juncture. The other side, the second side of your sheet, is the expenses by site. We have the central administration, which is the superintendent's office. We have the budget for that office. What was voted by the school committee? What the actual expenses are to date, as well as encumbrances that we currently have on books and available funds in each of these sites from central administration, district-wide, which includes special education and transportation services, your health insurances. That's why that looks so large, if you will. Each site, Ponacuit, the middle school, the intermediate school, Assawamsted Elementary, and Freetown. So as you can see, the budget that was voted, what we've spent to date, what's encumbered, and what's available as we move forward closing out the fiscal year. Some of the activities in my director's report for you itemize what activities we're currently performing in the business office in regards to year-end and getting ready for year-end. I can answer any questions and then continue with my director's report, Chairman, depending on how you would like to handle it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
As the memo that I have... I'm sorry. In regards to my memo...
We'll have a piece for public participation later on.
You can in public participation. That's next.
Point of order. So Rich, we have executive...
Point of order is... I want to ask a question about the budget.
Correct.
You're asking me to do public comment when you discuss the budget.
Correct. Point of order, Rich. You can get up and ask your budget 24 questions, and we have public participation, okay? Thank you. Appreciate it. Through the chair to Deirdre. Just a housekeeping issue, and then this is probably more towards Jack as well. Fallover Credit Union did reach out to me. My name's still on a lot of the accounts. I think it was from when I was previously treasurer. So there might have to be some documents being signed just to kind of transfer that over to...
So why don't I continue with my report?
If it's in there, you're the best. Thank you.
I thank you very much. If I could continue with my report.
Yep.
In regards to closing out the fiscal year, you see the activities that I have listed for you. Also, in regards to vendor activities, this week, I've brought in the vendors to meet with Jack, your next Director of Finance. We have included in those meetings the Director of Technology because of print services and the cost for print services. You have astronomical costs for print services. You have astronomical costs for copiers. Steve Owen, as you recall during our budget discussions, talked about the costs of copiers in the district. So I brought in the copy machine folks to meet with. Operations staff went through all of your 23 copy machines in this district, three of which are leased, the rest are not. So here we go. Jack, here's your volumes. Here's your copy machines. Here's where they are. Here's your per-copy costs. We need to take a look at this. But we were able to, from an operations standpoint, bring those vendors in and have staff all at the same time around the table and have a master's class on copy machines in Freetown-Lakeville. and have a master's class on copy machines in Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. Next week, my last day is May 16th. Next week, on Tuesday, I have Unibank coming in on Tuesday to meet with Jack, Deirdre, Margaret, Jen Scully. Banking, I'm sorry, Unibank is one of your banks. The next day, Wednesday, we have your financial advisor services coming in. They're coming to meet with Jack and Deirdre, Jen Scully, Meg Robinson. That's Unibank Financial Services. On Thursday, Rockland Trust is coming in. Rockland Trust is the conversation that you had had. So Rockland Trust, all of your financial institutions are coming in. Meetings are lined up for the purposes of, they are bringing signature cards. They are bringing documents for any and all signature changeovers, for all of your fiduciary documents that you have. We're going to handle those all next week through transition. That's one stop shopping. Additionally, tomorrow, your new, I'm sorry, insurance agent is coming in. We are doing a master's class on property and casualty, the costs of your buildings and property and casualty. All of your workers comp. We're bringing in your school board liability policies, your school pollution policy. You have a pollution policy. So tomorrow, we're at the 8:30 master's class insurance with the folks in the central office. It is also my highest recommendation to you that when you reorganize your school committees next year and you assign someone else to be the chair and someone else to be the secretary, you do not change your treasurer. Keep the treasurer for the term of the person that you elect. If that's two or three years, we won't go into all of this changeover issues that we have had, not only with the banking recently, but also with the DLS last October. So through these kinds of shifts and changes and bringing in our vendors into the district with the people around the table at the same time, we are moving forward very, very, very efficiently. So we're covering all of those kinds of things. Well, thank you for bringing that to the attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Additionally, getting back to my director's report, we're also taking a look at, you've heard me talk about 999 carryover purchase orders with COVID monies, cleaning all that up, working with Terry on 999s and all the Title I's. I can't tell you what this has taken from us both, but we're there. So I put that there as important because it was accomplished. I've had the auditors look at these things. They should be all cleaned up as we move forward in that regard. Additionally, in my director's report for you, I point out to you your financial application software, Infinite Visions and Tyler. We are moving that forward. As you know, you're not using the human resource part of that module. And we're doing budgeting over here and some other things. So in my paragraph here, I'm kind of imploring you to continue that professional development in infinite wisdom, infinite visions with respect to the work that we've done with the director of finance and operations by bringing that whole department together, including facilities and including technology. Those are your big money areas within that office to better perform some of these duties and assignments. We took a lot of time going over open purchase orders, blanket purchase orders, direct purchase orders, and management of those kinds of things. So we've done really exciting work here. Tyler needs some, a little more attention. We're opening up FY 25 next week and working with professional development, how to work with those multiple fiscal years. So again, and you see my statement in here about imploring continued professional development in respect to, or with respect to, excuse me, Tyler. Continuing with the FY 25 budget, as you know, we continue to monitor both the revenue and expense line items for increases and decreases. You've heard the tracking report. Jack and I review the tracking report. Terry, Ashley and I review tracking increases in beach pieces, move-ins, or what the ebb and flow of a natural school district budget is with respect to the budget vote that you had and where we are moving those tracking items forward. As I write here, as you've seen on the list, I am also tracking chapter 70 education aid and chapter 71 regional aid. Do not forget your regional transportation aid. This 104 from the Senate still has to go through the Senate. We had the governor's budget at $30. The 104 has to come out of education aid. Also in education is free community college. That's in the Senate budget, wasn't in the House budget. It's going to come from somewhere. These revenues that they don't have a handle on, they don't have the pattern. So you're going to have this for about two years until they can get that ebb and flow so that you can feel comfortable with that per pupil out of the House to the Senate. So we're still watching those. I am still watching regional transportation. So the two of those together is what we should be working with. Regional transportation was level funded for the governor's budget, but at 84%, you're supposed to be getting 100. Last year, you got 80. So we're still hoping for some movement here out of the Senate with respect to regional transportation. It's subject to appropriation at 100%. So we continue to monitor those areas as well. Again, continuing with my report, Lynch and Marini, we had them as I reported to you last month. Our audit firm, Bob Lynch, came in. Grady Connor came in for the purposes of finalizing some of the outstanding FY 23 that we've been working on. I say Terry and I as well and Margaret. But we're also pre-preparing, if you will, for FY 24 so that I can be helpful during transition to get to June 30th with year end closure as well. Bob and Grady know exactly what I have done all along the lines, what decisions I've made with what I've done and with all of the background information and documentation. So I took the time to explain the year. As you know, the first 15 weeks was to settle 23, and we're still working through some of those. So it was very helpful to have them in the House, if you will, and going through the banking and everything else that we were doing from the fiscal integrity and what our planning was moving forward from that perspective. Also, I provided Bob Lynch the leases to the elementary schools for the purposes of looking at those leases to the elementary schools to have a conversation with the school committee and the superintendent to fully understand the costs associated with those leases. I'm sorry, excuse me. I think that that is time to take a look at that. You should take a look at your leases. You should take a look at your agreements. You negotiate your contracts every three years with teachers and labor. It's really about time you take a look at that. I am very concerned for the district that we take a look at that. So they have those leases. They will outreach, they will reach out to the superintendent with respect to continued conversations in that regard. At the bottom of my report, I have provided to you the typical end of the year function so that you can know the work that's being done in the business office to get to that point. I've listed A through C, I'm sorry, A through E. They're here for you. The staff is working aggressively on these tasks and associated items as we get more and more efficient. And lastly, as you know, this is my last meeting. I first signed up for 15 weeks. It is my 61st week. So I thank you for the opportunity to serve. I have enjoyed the experience very, very much. I think it's important to recognize some really incredible work that we've done. Assawamset Windows and Doors, Greg, Deirdre, Jack, we pulled that off. We pulled that off. You had an OPM that zoomed in. You had a clerk of the works that was 92. God blessed the work that we did there. Assawamset Windows and Doors came in gorgeous. 60% of your business office turned over. We're still floating. We're still anchored to Winwood. And what we pulled off with 60% of your turnover and the support that we've had in the business office that you have approved, thank you very much. What we have pulled off is second to none. I don't mind adding that not too many people could have pulled it off. I'm glad to have come out of retirement. You're at a much better place. Not that it wasn't, it was just a different place. There's communications going on interdepartmentally that was unheard of for whatever reason. There is communications going on interdepartmentally with principals during budget. There is so much more interdepartmental communication going on, as well as outreach to our folks in our communities, in our towns. I'm very, very proud of that work. Very, very proud of that work. We could not have done that work with unsung heroes. There are unsung heroes in this district. There are teachers. There are students. There are families. But what we don't hear from are the Rosie Riveters in our district. And the Rosie Riveters that I have had the absolute stunning privilege to work with are Heather Ashley, Jen Seberg, Jen Scully, Agent Edelman, not Edelman, Agent Edelman, Joanne Pnoyer, Margaret Robinson, and the head Rosie Riveter, Renee. They're women. They're all Rosie Riveter, but they're in your offices as your second line all day long. It is unbelievable what they do for you. Think of the Rosie Riveters, what they did for our staff, our guys overseas. They are there working for you each and every single day. They are unsung heroes. They're Rosie Riveters, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with them very, very much. You have unsung heroes outside of your office that are volunteers in our libraries and our other areas. We have volunteers in our cafeterias, our food service workers, maybe Aramok, but they're our kids servicing our kids. And so there is a lot of folks doing a lot of work on behalf of kids, families, and the school committee. And I just really thank you for the opportunity to work with them, work with Rosie Riveters. I'm going to include Margaret French as a Rosie Riveter. Margaret is a volunteer, Freetown defender. Finance committee has asked wonderful questions in a very kind manner and wanted to learn and understand. You've got a gorgeous gem of a district here, a gorgeous gem of a town. I've called them villages for a reason. They are. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve you. There's my report, and I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Deirdre, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Deirdre from the table?
I just have a question. When do you want me to meet you to sign all of that stuff? You just want to send me an email?
I certainly do. I certainly do.
Yeah, through the chair. Deirdre drives that publicly, I think, at our last meeting, I think, when you were on Zoom. I can't thank you enough for being duped into coming out of retirement and coming to Freetown Lakeville and keeping the ship afloat when we were left in a pretty precarious position. We certainly couldn't have done it without you. I certainly appreciate the sessions in your office when your hands are flying all over the place and the paper and chart paper was all over the place, kind of breaking things down for us. So I can't thank you enough. Hopefully you take some time and relax and do whatever brings you joy. But really appreciate you. And on behalf of the committee, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to remind everybody, and thank you, Deirdre, for everything, how difficult it is. So when I speak with superintendents in the area who were in the same situation we were in, there are multiple districts that went to 2, 3, 4 in terms, which causes a huge problem. Some ended up hiring outside consulting firms, which caused even more problems. So we appreciate you, Deirdre.
Thank you.
We appreciate your knowledge and what you brought us.
Okay. See, no further questions from anyone? Deirdre, thank you very much. Moving on to our, an update on our public voice discussion.
Wasn't Zoom? That I wanted to get us connected to. Zoom creates inclusion, and you can also record the Zoom session when we don't have Lake Camp because there have been two instances that we haven't had Lake Camp. One resulted in a lawsuit, I believe, and the other one was was a budget meeting. And it was a very important budget meeting, and Lake Camp wasn't here. We couldn't find anybody to do it. But I think the major thing is Zoom creates inclusion. We can have people who can't be here come and be on Zoom. We can shut off the chat. People can raise their hands and ask a question. I mean, being a parent of many kids, there are a lot of times when I can't be in so many different places. And being on a Zoom is a lot easier than me trying to get somewhere or divide myself in half or send my husband someplace and having to take all the other kids with me. We can just jump on Zoom, make a comment, and be done.
Yeah, so through the chair, I don't think there was any objection from the committee in order to do that. I thought what our plan was in place at our last meeting was to kick it to the policy subcommittee to discuss and go from there. As far as the lawsuit goes, I don't know where that's coming from, to my knowledge. I don't think anyone on this committee is aware of a lawsuit that came from a meeting where.
Oh, I believe it was the Churchill lawsuit that it wasn't taped so that that could be used as evidence because we didn't have Lake Camp here that day. So that would be the lawsuit that I'm talking about, Kayla Churchill lawsuit.
Yeah, I'm still not following, but okay. So we'll kick, so we'll have to kick that to.
Yeah, when we were going to schedule a meeting, I think we were going to explore what other districts we're going to do and get some background on that. For a follow-up with the subcommittee.
Right. So I reached out to my listserv and asked numerous districts. No one had a policy on it that responded back to me. They did state that some of the districts did start it during COVID, and they just never ended, stopped doing it. But there was no formal policy on it. Some districts do allow the public participation, some do not, and others just don't do it. So it was sort of mixed.
All right. So that's, thank you for that piece with listserv. I think we can schedule a policy subcommittee meeting with that on the agenda. Chris, I believe you're a part of that subcommittee, so we can talk there and then make a recommendation to the full committee.
Yep.
Perfect. Thanks, Steve.
Can we do that before the end of the school year so that we can have it set for September?
That would make sense.
This is the first meeting?
Yes.
Do you want that in person, Zoom?
How about Zoom?
I think we should have both available.
So everybody can feel included.
Okay.
Well, I'll float just updates. You know, maybe with a new group, we can figure out a time.
Great.
All right, moving on to public participation. We'll allow each speaker a maximum of three minutes in which we can discuss topics within the scope of the committee or topics on the agenda tonight. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Rick, can you come up to the podium?
Welcome to come up to the podium.
Appreciate you.
Richard Cameron from Lakeville. I came to the school committee meeting on March 15th, March 25th, excuse me, and was asking about the Ursa II funding having to do with the generator for Assawamset School. And somebody was supposed to get back to me, and nobody's gotten back to me.
Sure. Okay. So. So what specifically, what information were you looking for, Rich?
Whether or not we're purchasing a generator. Yeah.
Using Ursa II funding?
Well, I'm going to give you a document that was approved by the school committee. And the school committee knows it approved. It was sent to the town accountants in each town. And by the way, this affects Freetown.
Thanks.
So the region got $960,000 in Ursa II funds. And originally, the money was going to be used to offset the 2022 budget. But the governor did not approve that. He vetoed it. So the money came back, you know, to the district. And so the district on a meeting voted, and you can read this very quickly because I only got three minutes. Basically, the school committee voted that they were going to allocate money to Freetown capital projects and Lakeville capital projects. And the total amount that were allocated down below for Freetown was $230,000, and for Lakeville was $222,000. This is fully documented. It's been videotaped. This is fully documented, it's been videotaped, and so if you want to look at the video, you can look at the video that stated August 25, 2001. You can also look at the minutes, it's recorded in the minutes. So if you look at the last sheet, excuse me. You can see that there's a list of projects that were listed there that were supposed to be done. Free Town Elementary, waterproofing, music room and auditorium, $100,000. Walkway improvements for Free Town Elementary, 97325. Elementary waterproofing, Brookfin Air, $50,000. And $60,000 for walkway improvements for Assam Womsted. And that says window repairs, but since we went ahead with the window project, it was amended to include a new generator for Assam Womsted. So the question is, have any of these projects been done?
I just have a comment on that, and perhaps, Deirdre, before you leave, I assume some of the end of the year, because given the fiscal year is not over yet, the outline of A to E, perhaps we can get a list of the projects that are pending.
Of course.
If you could send that to the committee.
I'd be happy to.
I would.
I'd be happy to send it to the Chair and through Superintendent. You're welcome.
Has any of this Ursa II money been used for any other purpose?
I have no idea. I would happily send it to the School Committee.
This is the first time I've seen this, Rich.
I've never seen it.
This is the first time I've ever seen this. This, that's impossible. There's dozens of emails, you know. I wasn't here. We weren't here at this time. No, it was after that, too. As a matter of fact, the previous Finance Director gave the interim Finance Director an RFP to send out for the generator, isn't that true?
I beg your pardon, is this fielded to me? What was the question?
Mr. Chair, would you ask it, ask the question?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
If you're able to answer.
What was the question?
Could you kindly repeat the question?
Sure. The previous Finance Director, before she left, she gave an RFP to go for the generator. Did that happen?
As I indicated at the last School Committee meeting, in my.
This one, the last one? The 15th or the last one?
The last School Committee meeting, in my Director's Report, I'm going to try to do this this way. In my Director's Report, I provided to the School Committee a list of items that was presented to me that totaled $1.4 million. I talked about my signature meeting, there's an appropriation, not that I agreed or I agreed with what was being purchased, that my signature meant there was an appropriation. You had a $495,000, so I stopped everything. As I reported at the last meeting, sir, sir, I bought the technology for 123.5, and I'm talking to my friend here, because we've been auditing this. I released the technology, and we went after HVAC, because the previous Director of Finance also has areas circled, investigate HVAC because of your deficiencies. So you couldn't afford everything. I released technology, so that was done. I released HVAC, that was done. I've never seen that. The RFP that you're talking about was two-thirds of the way done, put on my desk, given to Alan Strauss with a note that says, "Deirdre can be helpful with this," along with about a stack like this, that Deirdre could be helpful with, that totaled $1.4 million. Deirdre was helpful trying to get her arms around this, releasing what you needed for students to open up school, sir. Finished the Assam Womsted windows and door project, and I've turned over everything to your auditors. I've told your auditors, through the previous person to this person, I've got all of those documents. Here is what happened. Please audit it and tell the School Committee what is left with this list that had 1.4 million, which includes the generator, which has not been purchased yet. And my recommendation to you is write them a check, because if you go through your lease, you're responsible for these things, but you're the town's procurement officer at that juncture. That procurement is a federal generator that should be done by your fire chief and emergency services. We can't do that kind of thing. Greg can't be responsible for that kind of thing. So yes, 1.4 million, you didn't have it, generator went to the bottom. Auditors have it all, they will tell you what to do here.
Mr. Chair.
That's all I know.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, but it's going off on tangents that have nothing to do with the Ursa II funds that were available, okay? So the Ursa II funds, the $960,000, my direct question is, has the Ursa Money II funds been spent? I asked that at the last meeting.
So through the chair.
Yes.
Rich, in all fairness, your question, can we get a breakdown of those Ursa II funds?
Of course.
Thank you.
I just gave it to you. I just gave it to you right there.
Rich, well, so, Deirdre, correct me if I'm wrong, too, okay? So obviously, there was a transition that went on in the business office. Deirdre.
Terry's going to answer this question.
Transition that went on in the business office, correct? Your day one, you've talked about this many, many times, right?
Yes, sir.
There was a previous mistake by a Director of Finance, which left us in a little bit of a precarious predicament.
$495,000, your fourth quarter.
Correct.
But they're talking about the wrong stuff. I'm asking about.
Rich, I'm providing context.
I'm not talking about anything to do with anything else.
I'm providing context.
Just this.
I'm providing context.
Just, I'm just, I asked it before, and I still haven't got a direct answer.
We will get you.
Why is it so difficult?
So, Rich, we will get you an answer.
I have the state report here that shows you. Well, you know, you're saying things that aren't right. I mean, I have a state report that says how many, how much money we have in Ursa II funds, how much money has been spent.
Yep.
That's the responsibility of the Finance Director, who's been here a year now.
Rich, you'll have that information by the end of next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The School Committee voted on it, she said that it didn't. The School Committee did vote on it, and you can check back.
I appreciate the information.
You can check back on the minutes, you can review the video or whatever. So it's a little disappointing, and this affects Free Town, too. I mean, this money is Free Town's money. You know, they get, what does it say?
Thanks, Rich, three minutes are up. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Please, sir.
Oh, that's the way you want to end it, huh? You know?
Thank you. We'll get the answer to you. I'm telling you, we're going to do the work.
$400,000.
I'm telling you, we're going to do the work and get the answer to you. I'm willing to sit down and talk with you, Rich. Hi, Leah.
Hi, Leah Fabian, Leah Fabian, Lakeville, also on the Select Board. Superintendent Strauss, could you reiterate what you said in your email after, when we got the new numbers, the increase in the state aid, you sent an email to, wasn't it, Deb and Bob?
So I didn't say we did, I said it was voted to go from $30 per pupil to $104 per pupil.
So then you said something about, you sent an email to talk to Deb and Bob about something.
Just about what's going to happen now with that money. Now, I understand both towns, I've spoken with Bob already, Deb and I have been playing some emails, because she's busy. Traditionally, it goes one of three ways. It lowers town assessments, so that's one way. There is a conversation to talk about, how can we split it? And I'm not saying what we're doing, I'm saying what the possibilities are, or there's no conversation.
Okay. So here's my question, what would you like to see happen?
I mean, in utopia, the school always, you know, will always want more.
Okay, okay, so let's just stop there, okay? I understand, and I understand your position, however.
But you asked me a question.
Okay, go ahead, answer the question.
You asked me a question, so let me finish.
Okay, yep.
I'm also a realist, and so anything that can help the towns, I mean, we did our job when we met with Deb and with Bob, to go exactly where they said, things could be afforded. So I'm a realist, and I understand that 282,000, when you divide it 56%, 43%, that's a significant amount of money that goes back into the town's budget. So it's really just having, my intent was to have a conversation with Deb and Bob and be good, and we talked about that today.
Okay, so I can appreciate that. As a superintendent, I would expect nothing but, you know, being able to advocate for the schools, that's what your job is. However, as far as the School Committee is concerned, you guys are shameful for calling out three-minute marks on a former Select Board member who has done nothing but fantastic work for the schools for years, okay? You have in the past said you want to work with the towns, but you won't even give people an opportunity to talk about the budget during the budget conversation. You are holding, one, two, three, Carlos, four, me, myself, five, Rich LeCamara, and I'm sorry, Mike, from the Finance Committee, okay? Why should we work with you when you're going to be so rude to us? I mean, come on. You know, calling out three minutes on a former town Select Board member, you know, saying, oh, you'll only be heard for three minutes? I mean, that's, that's just disrespectful, plain and simple. It's disrespectful. And for your information, we haven't even funded our entire Lakeville budget. We cut $1 million out of our Lakeville budget. So we're not looking very good in Lakeville right now. We haven't even funded our own budget yet, we're still working on it. We haven't even, we're using free cash to balance our budget, so.
Thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Margaret French, Free Town Finance. As Deirdre stated, I have been working with this budget, I have been working, I have just, myself and Chris, have spent hours and hours and hours going through the budget. And kind of shame on you guys, your budget is off by $830,922. $805,803 is from Student Services alone. The entire sub-budget from Central Office is not added into the total. McKinney-Vento is not added into the total. There's $19,814 from IT that's not added in. I couldn't pinpoint exactly where it's from, except that it's from the high school subcategory. There is $5,306 missing from the FLEMS total, that's the substitute line. It's in the budget, it's not in the total. Also, that substitute line at FLEMS was not increased as the sub-line in all the other schools were, and I believe it was stated at one of the budget meetings that that sub-line was increased at every school to cover the subs, but it was not increased at FLEMS. I've heard you talking about a potential substitute rate increase. It's not in there as a placeholder. You negotiated with APSME, and there's no placeholder that I could find for the increase in that budget line.
Thank you.
Good evening, Christopher Blanco, Lakeville Finance Committee Chair, to follow along with, Deirdre just presented. So again, we worked together as a team in addition to finding those accounting discrepancies in the FY '25 budget. We also did a comparison between the FY '24 budget, the FY '24 General Ledger Report that Deirdre has provided, this was the March report that was sent earlier this month, and also compared that to the FY '25 budget summary. So I have this outline of a few of the discrepancies. We will certainly email this information to you after the meeting.
Thank you. Margaret, could you email yours, too, please? Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll email it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is just some of the highlights of what we found. So we're finding some discrepancies between numbers that we're seeing in the GL report and the budget summaries. Now, even the example, in the Central Office, we're seeing the superintendent's salary being reported on the GL report, so you know, if you look at that budget column, it's coming in as a 189, 901. However, we're seeing it in some of the other budget reports as 184, 370. So just some discrepancies there. We're also seeing a total of $644,150 difference between the FY '24 GL, when we look at the totals and compare that back to the budget sheet, we're seeing it, just another discrepancy we have there. And then we also went through, and you know, we went through by Central Office and by the schools and so forth, and we were looking at the totals, and we're seeing pretty much all those departments, the schools, Central Office and so forth, having differences. And the largest is on the Student Services, where there's a difference, again, between the FY '24 General Ledger Report that we have and the FY '25 budget of about $660,086. So we'll again gladly email you that information and then request a response. We'll provide a deadline for that.
And I can provide that response to the Chair as well. I've got three answers or four answers already, but certainly if you could provide me the list, I can provide the same information to you as well.
Yeah, through the chair, I think. We'll certainly get right on it. I mean, we've, we have sat with both town Finance Committees, and you guys have been phenomenal to be able to sit down. You've come to us with questions, we've answered them for you, and it all comes through collaboration, sitting down at the table, right? So that work needs to continue, right? Through Central Office, through the chairs, and it will continue moving forward. Just let us know the questions that you have, and we'll get you the answers.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No, appreciate you. Thank you.
Good evening, Deborah Petty, Free Town Town Administrator. I just have a couple of questions, maybe. First of all, if you're going to get the information for the Ursa Money, could you forward that to Free Town as well, so we can be in the loop? Second of all, I was reading Lakeville Select Board's minutes that I get online, and I guess at one of the meetings, they were talking about a regional grant for some safety measures for active shooter training. As a regional grant application, I didn't hear anything about it in the town of Free Town, so I was just wondering if that's something that you'd be looking for Free Town to sign as part of the region, or you're doing that just with Lakeville? Does anybody know?
So there was an active shooting simulation at Free Town Elementary that was run through the Free Town place.
Right.
I do not know of one that is going through Lakeville, so I will contact Chief Perkins.
Okay. I'm just wondering what that entails. Sometimes, I think because the school is located in Lakeville, Free Town is left out of a lot of conversations, and I've been trying to really ask to be notified or in the loop, and it hasn't improved, but I still think there's room for improvement on communication with Free Town. We do pay our share of the bills for the students here, and it does our children that do attend the schools here in Lakeville as well.
Of course.
So I'd like to make sure that we're recognized.
Can you send me what that brand is?
I'll send you, I'll tell you a look at the Lakeville Selectmen's Minutes meetings, because that's where I read it. I heard the students earlier talk about the booster program, so I think that's something that, too, if you could reach out to the towns, we may be able to collaborate with some, on some level, to help with that, in terms of whether we have volunteer hours or whether we have some funds that maybe we can work out. So just reach out to myself, and I will put it where it needs to go within the town.
Will do, thank you so much.
I will probably wait to talk to Superintendent Strauss in our meeting room, we're going to talk, we're going to follow up with the funding that may be coming, the additional funding. But I did look at the spreadsheet that came from Deirdre about where we are year-to-date with expenditures, and there's a couple of schools that have quite a bit of money that looks like it's going to be left on the table, so I will be asking about that when we sit down, I think, to just discuss, there's a couple, one of the schools had at least $450,000 left, and I think Central Office had, or District Regional had $400 and some thousand. So it'd be interesting what your thoughts are on how you're going to spend that money. And then I guess my last point is, you've been here now almost two years. I know that there's a Superintendent Evaluation Committee, I know that it just keeps getting pushed to the back burner. My question is, was there evaluation done after the first year?
Yeah, I can, I can respond to that. Yeah, I can respond to that. Yes, there was. He's in the tail end of a two-year initial evaluation, so we did his summative evaluation at the midpoint. That has been done, and then at the end of this year, we will finish up the two-year evaluation. Yep.
And then the summit, the first one is not open to the public comment, it's basically the school committee and the superintendent that work on that evaluation?
To my knowledge, the formative is not, the summative will be, yes. Yep.
So this, so as of going forward, it'll be open to comments from other parties for the evaluation?
This should be, yeah, when the superintendent evaluation is finalized, it's definitely a public document.
I don't, I'm not asking that. Is there any public input into the evaluation?
We could bring that to the evaluation subcommittee. I know in the past, we have sent out surveys to staff, to community. We could include town members there. I think we obviously want as many voices as possible, so I think that's a great idea that we'll bring forward to the committee for sure.
Yeah, I mean, Superintendent Strauss, this is your first job as a superintendent, am I correct? So, I think it's important for growth and for, just to continue working. We all sometimes need to know what we're doing great and what we're not doing so great, myself included. So, I look forward to that process and it being a public where we, I asked about it last year and was told that we cannot have any input in that as a town, so, as the first, in the first year and the first portion of that, so.
Ms. Pettia, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I mention one thing if it would be all right?
Please.
It's just to follow up on getting back to where we are in the fourth quarter, and all the fourth quarter activity that we're doing, and open purchase orders, and where we are with all the activity, and what the reports are showing as far as that's concerned. You'll also see on that report a $700,000 line item for a state assessment that we charge off in June. So by no means does that report, ooh, where are we going to do and what are we going to spend? We've got activity going, we're verifying, we're pre-auditing, we're hitting that June 30th, we're paying all our obligations, and my recommendation to the school committee this year will be the same as it was last year, and every year from this point on, you prepay your summer tuitions for special education, so you bridge one year to the next year. So, that's just kind of a follow-up. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to new business. REIT's collaborative vote.
So in front of you, the vote is to appoint, to appoint the superintendent to serve on the Board of Directors of REIT's Collaborative. Okay. Thank you, Rich.
Second. Further, just an opportunity for further discussion here, right? Was there any feedback pertaining to our vote regarding the addition of the two districts that we spoke about, or no feedback on that one?
No, we lost.
It passed.
It passed.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. All I got.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? Okay. I have on the table a motion and a second. All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained, because I have no idea what you're talking about. Okay? Because nobody explained it, so I'm sitting here waiting for an explanation.
So REIT's Collaborative?
I know what that is.
Is, their board of trustees is made up of superintendents from each of the districts that are part of the collaborative. Someone has to be appointed from Freetown-Lakeville to serve on that board, so that's what this is.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for not being clear.
Okay. Apologize as well.
Then we have the same thing for South Coast Education Collaborative. Again, serving on the board.
I got it.
Okay. Serving on that board.
Okay, is that a, should we vote that separately?
We have, separately, yep. We have to entertain that motion.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to vote to elect Superintendent Strauss to sit on the board for South Coast.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes. Alan, thank you. Okay. We have a line item for some middle school surplus items.
Mr. Higgins presented a list to all of you, you should have it, in terms of books that have been taken out of circulation due to damage and or wear, and they're not books that can be donated because of the condition they're in, but because they were purchased with our funds, you have to vote on the ability to dispose of them.
Second.
Any discussion? Any question? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor to vote the listed items designated for surplus, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, subcommittee updates. Regional Finance Committee.
Okay. All right. We tried to set up a date, it didn't work out so well, so we're going to have to go back and set another time up to have discussion. We have to set it within the next couple of weeks before they have the town meeting. So, Courtney and I will have to reach out and figure out how we can schedule that.
Okay, thank you. Superintendents Evaluation Committee.
Yep. Superintendent's evaluation is ongoing. Deb, we certainly heard your feedback, and I think we need to schedule a meeting ASAP to talk through a survey to go out to towns, parents, community, staff, almost like a 360. I know we used to do it with Rick, but as far as the evaluation process going, it is happening. Superintendent's constantly uploading evidence to...
Vector.
I was going to say T Point. Vector. Yep. So, we're good there. But yeah, absolutely more meetings to come. I'll work with the committee to get something scheduled to talk through the survey piece.
Do we get access to Vector? Do we get access to Vector?
Uh, I don't think that, yeah, I don't think that's an issue. Yeah.
We do?
We can set that up, yeah.
Okay.
Superintendent's committee does.
Yeah, just the committee.
Yeah, the Superintendent's Evaluation Committee has access to that, because that's the evidence we use to write up the report. The whole committee will have access to the report.
Yeah, so when the formative summative is complete, we share it in the full committee.
Correct. Correct. Yep. Absolutely.
Deb, if you had questions about the Superintendent's evaluation, you can just go to Desi, and you put in Superintendent's evaluation, and it's very detailed, and it even has a video on how it's done.
Okay. Wellness Health Committee update.
We have a meeting. I believe it's June 2nd.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee.
We touched on this earlier, we're going to set a date. Thank you, Renee, for doing that research.
Great.
And last but not least, Capital Committee update.
Capital Subcommittee has not met. The overall large Capital Committee met, met with Habib and Associates. Got some information. We are going to be setting up a Capital Subcommittee. Who is, who is the list of Capital Subcommittee? It's Steve, Courtney, and John, I think, I believe. We will meet to discuss what, Habib and Associates?
Survey.
Survey.
Yep. Any other business? They may come before this meeting.
I have something, the school committee every year is supposed to have goals, so I would like to ask the community to send us some goals that you'd like to work on. I don't think it's fair for us to just set goals. I think the community, that's why we're here, you voted us here, so I would say just email it. You don't have to email it to me. I say it's SA@freelake.org.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Steve.
Opposed? Abstained. Thank you, everyone.